This meeting will come to order. Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting tonight. November 6th, 6:00 PM, Fayette County Council. The minutes, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes so that we can approve them from our October 1st meeting? If someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make one.
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
On the mail, Sharon, I forwarded Sam's.
Pardon me?
On the mail, I forwarded Sam's alcohol board notes to everybody.
Did you see, okay, Sam Harvey, his alcohol, he's on the alcohol board, and there was a email. There was three, I think it was Speedway on 30th Street, and the last one I did not know. And then, do you remember the other one, Kay?
I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
And I forgot you, James, sorry.
Are you on there?
VFW on Eastern, the grocery store on Speedway on 30th Street, and David Zeltzer on 3200 Hackenberry Road.
Okay, and they were approved on?
11/6, yeah.
Yeah, only 11/6. Is that all the mail that we have received? We don't need to approve that or anything, do we? Okay. County attorney?
I don't have to take one, right?
Thank you. That reports, committee reports. The only committee report would have been from Sam Harvey, and that was, we just did that in mail. Are there any other committee reports? Okay. Commissioners? We have Mr. Gail Strong with us in the house.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Commissioners today, we had several items, just routine work. We did approve a 144 request for Steve Bills here today to hire a part-time employee. We gave Dave Rittenman, the animal shelter director, permission to come to you next month to ask for additional appropriation out of his donations fund to take care of a couple of shock and vaccine programs he's having at the animal shelter this fall. So he'll be in, see you next month, and he'll be asking for about $7,585 out of the donations fund. We signed a final approval of our community crossings projects for the year today. So those, the paving we did on Everton Road and 450 West has passed all inspections and cleared all the approvals that it needs to be done. We did approve a change order with Butler Fairman that actually lowered the price of the project by, it was over $12,000, which is a good thing. We approved contracts with MetroNet to provide phone service for the women's correctional facility. And we approved a quote today for new heating boiler for the courthouse and jail today from a company called Resolve Tech. One is a 1 million BTU unit, the other one for the courthouse is a 2 million BTU unit. And lead time on those is going to be four to six weeks. So sometime next month, they'll be here to install those. We haven't gone so far as to round up a supplier yet, but we are going to eventually put in a water softener system here in the courthouse to extend the life of these boilers, because they've never had soft water to them. And the technicians all tell us that that is a worthwhile thing to do. So we're going to actively pursue that. We agreed today to allow the reporter's office close on November 20, all day, for a CSI training for Lisa Witt and her deputy. And we got a report from Dale Munson today on the progress of the repairs going on on Bridge Number 75, out on, just north of Springersville, on County Road 450 East. And they're going to be pouring the rest of the concrete on that approach Monday of next week is their current plan. And then within a week after that being poured, hopefully we'll have that bridge back open again. It's been, it's been too long since, you know, these things take time, and I'm kind of impatient. And we also approved the OKRA grant application for the Everton Water Corporation. My client, Peter, was here today with all the paperwork for that, so they're applying for another grant down there that we gave approval to. And we also approved the meeting dates for commissioners for calendar year 2025, along with the holiday schedule for 2025. And other than that, I can't think of anything more for me.
Dale, what kind of piping will you have on these boilers? Do you know offhand?
Most of it's copper.
Copper, okay. The reason I'm asking is because even with soft water, you get some salt in it, and I want to make sure it's not something that's going to corrode the piping with salt within the soft water.
Well, I'm not the expert on that, Bob, but the people that we've talked to all highly recommend it.
Copper should be okay.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Well, thanks a lot. Good seeing you all.
Thank you, Dale. Okay. Did you have something, Steve?
I got 144s, employee salaries.
Okay, that's on down here.
Yeah, the 144s.
Yeah, okay, we'll be with you. Alrighty. Okay, we're going to go move on to transfers, additionals, and the reductions. Additional appropriation to County General Fund, 1,000. Emergency management to account 20210 for gas, diesel, and oil in the amount of $600.
Hello.
Hello.
So this first appropriation is for the fuel for my truck. I am completely out of money now. I believe when I looked today, it was $15 a week. The $600 additional will carry me through the rest of the year at $55 a week, which is roughly averaging what it costs all year long. So that's what this first request is for.
And then, do you just want to?
Do you want to go separate or do you have the other?
We can go ahead and do that one, and then we'll do the other.
Both?
It really did. Go ahead.
Yeah, my question isn't really for Wade, but more the commissioners. I did, I did some research on how much gas and diesel's gone up over the last few years. And, you know, I understand that we're getting a lot more activity out of our EMA than we did a few years ago. And we've purchased a truck which will use more in fuel. But, you know, the fuel prices have only gone up. Gas prices have gone up about 13.5% on average per year, and diesel about 8.2% by the research that I did. And our costs, though, over the last several years have been extraordinarily higher. Like 111% one year, 64% another year, 42% another year. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to kind of keep those prices, keep those costs a little bit better under control.
Okay, you mean for specific to the EMA?
Well, not necessarily just the EMA, but, you know, EMA was brought up here, so, and those are the only costs where I'm seeing, I mean, not necessarily only, but they're the ones that I've looked up because we have this here tonight, so where the costs have gone way up, like way up.
Compared to what yours?
Um, between '20 and '21, between '21 and '22, between '22 and '23.
When'd you come on, Wade?
He came on late '22, right?
January 1st.
'23.
I think we know why the gas costs are so much more.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, it's extraordinarily higher.
Mike questioned the prior administrator numerous times when he did budget hearing, how he could sustain the budget of $600 for an entire year for gas. I mean, there's no way. I mean, I think his, I think his numbers are unrealistic. I don't know what numbers you looked at, Scott, but I would argue that that has a lot to do with it.
Well, I'm, listen, I'm going to support the additional appropriation. Please don't misunderstand. But I would like for the commissioners to begin, you know, watching those costs across the board, whether it be EMA or anybody else, you know? Just FYI.
I guess a question to ask is, the EMA doing things now that was not done in the past that would cause an increase in the fuel price?
Absolutely. Yes.
Such as?
Making runs now. Last week, I think I've made two runs, one to support a DNR mission, Department of Natural Resources, one to support a law enforcement mission, and that was just last week. But I'm actually out doing things. I went and picked up the command trailer north of Chicago with my work truck. I had to fill up three times just to get up there and get back with that command trailer, but that was still cheaper than paying them to deliver it here. So, yeah, I'm out doing things. I'm actually going and making sure that we're covering what we need to for emergency management and making sure that if we have to go out, we have places we can go to, things that we can do. But, yeah, I'm absolutely doing more than previous administration.
Then I would say that we need to look at that, and what Scott was saying, trying to get it within the budget when you present your budget next year.
Well, and, you know, Wade always is, has in the last couple of years been very, I don't mean this in a bad way, aggressive about your budget, right?
Greedy. Greedy, that's it? Yeah, no.
Well, aggressive, right? And I guess I wasn't not, I wasn't just speaking regarding the EMA, but I think we need to be, watch our costs on gas, diesel, and oil, no matter what department we're talking about. And because costs have gone up, but, you know, sometimes we can let things get away from us, you know, a little here and there. So if it's just something that maybe commissioners could pay attention to, that would be great.
I don't know if you noticed it after last night, you know, Trump won, so he said, "Come down tomorrow." Come down and go bucky-gum.
I would not hold your breath right away. But I would say one thing, you know, I don't use my truck, my work truck, for personal stuff, so if you see me out and it's late after hours, I'm either out because of a call or something like that.
You do drive it home at night, all right?
I do drive it home. I'm on call 24/7 according to my job description, which I respond to incidents to help. Just got called out today to Everton to help with a line down. I didn't make it, so I called one of my team members, and they went out, one of my volunteers, and sat on a power line waiting on Duke to come. So we do get calls from fire departments who go out and help and stuff like that. But typically, I may run to Walmart if I'm in town in my work truck before I go home, but that's, I don't know, I'll joyride in my work truck, believe me. I prefer not to be in it as much as possible.
But we may have to be careful, though, because that might be considered as, well, no, I guess, I forget the word I'm looking for, like a bonus.
Sure. It is a fringe benefit by IRS requirements. And you should just send an email, and I copied you on it, saying, "You know, starting January 1st, we are going to be enforcing that and adding that to his pay."
Okay.
Because it's an IRS requirement.
I think like Mike said, that prior. What, anyone I'm alluding to? No activity, now you're doing a lot of activity. I think that's why it's all about it.
No, different management style.
Okay.
Different management styles and different ways of handling it.
Again, I'm not being specific because the IRS rules and that kind of thing. I'm not being necessarily specific about EMA. I mean, it is the situation in front of us, and it just came up, so I thought, well, you know, I think it's something the commissioners ought to pay attention to, since it is considered to be a fringe benefit.
Is that a plan to go with deputies, too, then?
IRS code, please be do a full search and.
Okay.
So enforcement vehicles are exempt?
Police vehicles are exempt.
Okay, so moving forward with this appropriation, do I have a motion to approve this $600?
So moved.
Second. Mike?
Yeah. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. The next appropriation to the emergency management donation fund 4105 to account 40400 equipment, $6,800.
So this additional appropriation, our local emergency planning committee, our LAPC, along with Bentonville, Glenwood, fire departments, and Fayette County Sheriff's Department, purchased radios from Martinsville Police Department. These were used, 800 radios, they're like a year old, but they all used the local emergency planning committee as kind of a middleman. So I was doing that since I'm the chair, of working with Martinsville, setting up the cell, and making sure that everything gets sold out. So those departments sent me their money, we put it into the donation fund, and now I need to pay Martinsville for those radios. So that's why we're requesting that, that money.
I made a motion to pass additional appropriation.
A second. All in favor?
How many radios are we getting?
So I got 24. So my emergency management volunteer guy, I think we got seven, Bentonville got, I think, five, Glenwood got seven, Sheriff's Department got five, so.
Everton opted over what?
Say again?
Everton opted over what?
Yeah, I asked, I asked them before, I asked the Sheriff's Department, and they said they didn't want them, so they're waiting on a grant or something, so.
So all in favor, everyone said aye. Opposed? Okay, so moved.
So my last thing I wanted to tell you all is I brought the instant command trailer down here, and I'll have it set up after the meeting if you guys would like to go through it and see what that state homeland security grant paid for, along with the city and the county match. So I'll be here a little bit after your meeting, so feel free to come out and walk around and go through it, so.
It's outside the way to talk out.
Yeah, it's out there tonight.
It's outside the way to talk out, but I pulled up.
Yeah, there was a couple out there fighting earlier, and I was like, "Just stay away a little bit farther." All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ray, for additional appropriation to Miss Meinit Fund 11175 to account 30071 Medical Services in the amount of $20,000.
Is that Zach's?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. The next one will be additional appropriation to County General Fund 1,000 Foreigner to account 30401 Pathology and Autopsy. Congratulations.
So why I'm here is to ask a little bit more money. I had $35,000 budgeted for my autopsies for pathologists, and so far we've spent $39,150 on that, and I still owe $6,600, and that's for autopsies that have not been paid. I had used all that I can from what's left over on my other accounts, who goes over, so I just need the additional appropriation. It is slowed way down, which is really a good thing. There's really no way to accurately budget this because of its death, and there's no way. We knew, and we have superpowers, so I'm just asking, I think that $11,000 altogether would work.
So you're asking for 11 instead of $17,600?
Yes. So that was for last month, and taking into account what I owed and how we've been not busy for the other six weeks, I think that 11 would work.
Keep in mind, too, the cutoff is in mid-December, so we're really only talking about six weeks.
So you do want to amend it to $11,000?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have to re-advertize that date?
No.
Okay.
Not when you go less.
Okay, this only on orders, right?
Does someone make a motion to approve?
I'm making. Motion to approve the $11,000?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is transfer in statewide 911 fund 4912 from account 20112 Office Furniture to account 40400 Equipment in the amount of $700.
Hi. So our fax copier machine, it bit the dust. We put new rollers on it, still it works, so the 700 was to purchase a new fax copy machine.
You guys still use a fax machine?
Yeah, the prosecutor's office and the probation faxes, their pre-sentences and everything to us, and.
Certain things have to still be faxed.
Well, you guys can do that electronically, too.
Yeah, they still fax it. It's a copier, too, so we have double copiers if we needed it. The last copier, I mean, it was bought in 2012, so Michael come and put new rollers on it, and just wouldn't drag the paper in, and we weren't, and then Kara Cider came over one day and said, "Hey, I sent you like four pre-sentences." We never got one up, so we're not, we weren't even getting the information from their offices, so that was all this. So had to buy another one. It does give out occasionally, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved.
Okay, any questions other than that? Have a nice evening, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, next on the agenda is 144s Community Corrections, Mr. Steve Bills.
I had brought a copy, and then everybody was emailing the copy private.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm just here to present to you salaries that were approved by the advisory board on October 15. What I did was ask the advisory board for their approval for 2.5% across the board for cost of living adjustment, and then the opportunity to earn up to 2.5% max on top of that as a merit increase. So pretty much everybody on staff is getting anywhere from 4% to 5%. We have a really good staff over there right now. Questions? And again, that all comes out of, pay increases and salaries all come out of basically our project income fund. It's not out of our actual grant dollars, it's money collected, it's fees from the participants, and we are pretty busy right now.
Okay. Does someone like to make a motion to approve this?
There is a typo on that last page. Instead of James, that young man's name is Jacob. We talked to Hagan today and let her know, but he's coming tomorrow with his paper board.
So this is coming out of your project income?
Yes.
Not ours?
Now, the county, we pay everything, we maintain that building. If we need a rooftop heating area unit, we would pay for it, that's just how it's.
Just a second, I'll make a management adjustment.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, guys. And I will add that I did mention in Commissioner Reed today, Jane's probably already filled everybody in, that we made a $500,000 contribution to the Women's Center, and that all went through, got everything signed by the state, everything's good, and we're working towards a deal now. County attorney draws it up, makes it look real good and legal. County attorney draws it up, makes it look real good and legal, so I'm going to get some more numbers to him, and all the fees collected from the females for the work release portion will be going to a fund to help support the work release center. We will not receive any of the funds from the females other than what we pay for, you know, what we have to cover the bracelets that we put on.
So is it going to go to Zach's or is it going to go to the county?
Well, that's up to however it works for the county and however you all decide how you're going to do that. But if the place stays full at the current rates, and we haven't changed the prices for work release for several years now, if it stays where it's at and it remains full, it could be $125,000 a year is what it would boil down to. Now, there's going to be a couple days here and there where, and I know they're going to be pretty aggressive, there's a lot of females sitting in the jail that probably would qualify, will qualify for work release, and that's obviously up to the prosecutor. I believe it's going to get used in, well, it's not used by our county, drug court's going to use a bunch, the judge will like five beds, he's already been clear, and then other counties will be, I think, lined up to have some females in that. They need a little more than maybe home detention, and we can also use it as a sanction if somebody kind of has an issue on home detention. By statute, I'm allowed to increase their level of incarceration, which they consider work release the max for community corrections. I can move them into there as a sanction, it can be for 30 days, it can be for the rest of their time, and I just have to notify, send a letter to the court and let it know I did it, so.
And you'll have no problem housing other counties, right?
As long as there's beds available. Fayette County, as I've said all along, Fayette County will come first.
Priority, but if we, if early on, if we want to get them full, make money, I kind of, I hope that's okay, I kind of advertise that to some other county judges just to let them know.
Rush County?
Yeah, just that way, that way, I mean, once you're going a year from now, you may not need any of that, but early on to get it full.
Sure. And we get from, you know, it's going to benefit the county, you know, Zach's budget more than anybody, obviously, to keep it full. We do get a lot of mails from Wayne County. Wayne County does not have, they have work release at their jail, but we've met with all, I've met with all the judges more than once, and they all say they wouldn't even qualify for what the sheriff wants work release to be. It's 8 to 4 Monday through Friday.
They got some scandalous judges.
Yeah. I've been before a few, some of them are a lot of fun. No, they are, they are, I've never had any trouble with them, but they're a lot of fun. So that's just a little update on what we're...
Well, he said, I got to clarify on that. He said the judges were joking, they wouldn't even qualify, and I was...
No, they really, they really did. I mean, 8 to 4 Monday through Friday, as we all know, nobody works Monday through Friday, 8 to 4 anymore. So it is what it is there, so. But as far as the females go, they're, as long as there's beds available, I know we've got several already in the pipeline. And you would probably be aware of that as what happens.
And Dale, you have a date on when it's going to be ready?
Next year.
Right now, it looks like it'll be sometime in December before we get the final punch list.
December this year or next?
This year.
Okay, good.
This has been awful hard to predict going along, but realistically, I think if we can be, get up and running in January, I'll settle for that. We're a lot closer now than we were two years ago, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I would hope so. Okay. Pretty broke down.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you, Steve.
Old business, new business. Did everyone receive a calendar for the dates for next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
One picture, one.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Okay, okay. So everyone does have the calendar, if not, it's in your email. Okay, and then we have some ordinances.
We need to approve.
Okay, we're going to approve the calendar. All right, anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, so moved. Sorry about that. Okay, now...
And then the next three things are just ordinances. The first two, the ordinance to allow the deposits into the HSA, we kind of do this every year, it's been in place longer than I have been here, where we just, it's an annual thing, so you have to approve it every year if you don't want to make any changes to it, where we deposit $1,000 for an individual or $1,500 for a family plan to the, any employees who choose the high deductible health insurance plan. Do I have any questions on that, or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So moved.
And then the next one is the stipend in lieu of health insurance, and this one, we've been doing it again for longer than I have been here, we did make the change last year to require proof of a supplemental policy if somebody is taking the stipend instead of the health insurance, if they have a Medicare supplement policy, they're giving us the proof of expenditures, and then we're reimbursing up to the amounts that are stated in the ordinance.
Motion to deny.
Okay. Someone want to second his motion to deny?
Can you explain?
Deny them, yeah. So it's reversed, it's opposite of what you would typically do. So what I'm saying is deny the stipend typically, probably certainly a motion to approve, but actually a motion to deny stipend.
I just don't know why you want to...
I just don't have a position for anything.
But isn't it cheaper to do this than to...
If they take it, it's not mandatory, they have to have it. The stipend in lieu of health insurance.
No, but when it was originally done, it was to encourage older employees to get off of our health insurance, which would lower the cost of health insurance, because typically older people have more health issues.
They don't expect it to be a second at all.
That's fine, I was just explaining...
Why don't you want me, I think we should talk this...
Right.
Because I know it's changed from like back from the Yoda's time to now, and...
Most important matters.
Well, the only thing that changes, it used to be we automatically gave them a certain amount of money without any proof that they actually used that money to purchase a supplemental policy. Well, now we're requiring, last year it was amended to, we require proof that they're purchasing a supplemental policy.
It's just a personal, I don't mean, it's not, it's nothing personal against anybody, it's not aimed at anybody, it's just a personal, I have, it's all. I don't expect, I don't expect it to be a second.
I don't think we can legally change someone's...
It's offered here by your...
Listen, hear me out, please. I don't think we can change their benefits while the person's in office.
That's it. If we get seconded, it just dies.
I mean, you could change it, it says on it that it's to be reconsidered each year, that it's in place for one year only and to be reevaluated every year.
Right.
It's like if we make an ordinance change to employees from something in the handbook or a rule, whether they're in office or not, they're like an official, that takes effect the first of the year. It's going to be a lot different. I'm going to deny it, again, like I said, I don't...
I understand.
It kind of goes a little bit more than that. It's all things, so. Just understand what you're saying yourself, I don't know what you're saying.
I just want to know what you're thinking.
Wait, I think you just, save the college money.
I was sure it was...
You can just say you have a second, and if not, motion dies for lack of a second.
Do you want more, everybody?
Yeah, then they can make...
Your motion to approve?
Not you. So does someone want...
My motion was to deny, Bob.
Right, so does someone...
So if nobody seconds it, it just dies.
Yeah, if no one seconds his, it will die.
Again, and I reiterate, it's nothing against any person, it has nothing to do that, it's just a way to save the college some money.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
Or you a motion?
Yeah, ordinary motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
You got dueling what, dueling?
See.
Is there a time limit, Jeff?
There's not a time limit, but we're reasonable people.
Right.
Sharon, you can't second it, you as well too, just because you're president, you can't second it.
Right. No. Is anyone else going to second? Then it was done.
Okay, as soon as this is on the seconded.
Pardon me?
He said as dumb as this looks, I'll just second it. Because it's either, if it sits there, it does nothing.
He seconded the motion to accept it.
Jeff, what happens if nobody, if just, I did the one to deny it, deny, they did the one to prove it, what happens?
It's effectively tabled, it's effectively tabled and put on the agenda for next month. You're going to have to address it at some point in time anyway, I guess.
That's what I'm kind of getting, I think the majority, I think in everybody's minds, some people don't want to say it, but I think the mindset is, somebody wants to approve it, give it a second.
You can second something, you can make a motion and vote against it, you can second something and vote against it.
Well, my mindset is, I mean, if you denied it, so apparently you don't want it, and now you're...
I'm just trying to, I know what people are thinking, that somebody doesn't want to say it.
He's just trying to help it get to a vote.
I say we table it and talk about it next week.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, right?
Well, we didn't until you said something.
Okay, I guess it's, motion to table till next month.
Well, it's, you got to vote on it, you have a motion.
Too late, you got a motion and a second on the floor.
I think we had a second.
But it's died.
Mike seconded it.
Oh, Mike seconded it, okay.
So you have a mo, so you go...
So we have a vote that needs to be taken.
Take your second back.
I take my second back.
Just vote on it.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
If you vote on it and you all vote against it, then you can...
I'll second it, but I'm just going to vote against it anyway, so it doesn't matter.
So you have a motion, a second, a war discussion, if not, put it to vote.
Okay, I am totally confused, but...
I wasn't trying to make this confusing, I apologize.
I think it's crazy confusing.
I like it, you're intentionally, it's fine.
Right, okay, so I think we should table it, but we got to vote, how are we voting? Is everybody yaying they?
It's two, roll call, roll, two, roll call, roll.
Roll call. Okay, Winter?
No.
Stain, Riker, Peyton, you can't.
I vote yes.
She has a reason.
But just say, what did Tim...
Patterson, yes, okay. Bettington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Crane.
I can't vote for his card.
No, no, I'm, I'm not fully understanding, I don't want to vote either way, so what do I do?
Can I try to rephrase it?
I...
So what I did, Sharon, what I did, Sharon, is right now, if somebody, if somebody that's older does not want the health insurance, the decline, it helps this county to take the stipend. But my thinking is I'd just rather save the money and gamble that somebody is not going to take it, they have their own health insurance.
Jane.
That would help, benefit the county to a degree.
Jane, I want Jane in mind, yes.
Okay, is that, is that the majority?
It was already the majority before Jane.
Okay, well then it's, we'll move on.
I'm sorry, Crane, did you?
You got to have a vote for the record, so.
Yes.
Pass five more.
All in favor?
What's on our end?
Okay.
Yeah, we had five yeses, one no.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last ordinance that we had on our agenda for tonight was the ordinance to approve the recorder's sworn statement, but the recorder was unable to be here this evening, so that one will have to be tabled. I need a motion. Okay, I need a motion.
We have to table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any needs? So moved. Okay. Any other comments? If not, someone making a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, she refused on the adjourn, does that mean? Mike, motion to adjourn.
Mike?
Stop.
I don't agree with him.
You can kick him off the club, I think.
All right, all in favor of returning the meeting? Aye. Okay, any names?
Adjourned.
Don't you think that should...